All right.
Yeah.
So we're gonna call the April 22 meeting of the Concord Select Board to Order. And I don't think we need to take the roll because we're all here in person. So first item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any? Well, that will save us 15 minutes.
Make that up by reading proclamations.
By what?
Meeting what? We could make that up by reading proclamations if we want to.
Well, it's not necessary to make it up. Again, it is, you know how I feel about Parkinson's Law. So we then move on to the consent agenda. Mary?
Well, first, is there any discussion?
I think we should acknowledge the proclamations that we're making.
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to do that?
In particular, you know, acknowledge our gratitude to the town's administrative professionals, as well as the municipal clerk, who is actually named in the proclamation currently, Kari Maitari. And the other two proclamations, which are also of importance, the proclamation regarding Holocaust Remembrance Day, which begins a series of days of remembrance on May 5th, and Rais Amity Day, which will be June 9th this year.
Right, I agree. And Public Works Week is another proclamation.
Thank you, sorry.
So all of those people, thank you.
Very good. Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good.
All right, then we have appointments.
We do. Move to appoint Allison Ailey of 47 Warner Street to the West Concord Advisory Committee as a full member to complete an unexpired term of April 30, 2026. Move to appoint Gregory Doherty of 188 Border Road to the West Concord Advisory Committee as a full member, currently an associate member, for a term to expire April 30, 2027. Move to appoint Sue Gladstone of 339 Heath Bridge Road to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2027. Move to appoint the following alternate members to the Historical Commission for terms to expire May 31, 2025. Lauren Meyer of 36 Milran Lane, Beth Van Duzen of 4 Granite Post Road, Douglas Ellis of 11 Concord Green Unit 1, Daniel Frost of 10 Orchard Road.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That move is on to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you and good evening. I just have a few items that I wanted to mention to you this evening. Our 2023 Annual Town Report is finally up online. It was sent to the printer last week, and we will have copies of that available at Annual Town Meeting beginning on Monday. I wanted to announce the appointment of Daniel Pettit as our new Director of Council on Aging. He started today, I think, just? Today's his first day. Prior to coming to work for the Town of Concord, he worked at Concord Park. So he's been in town for a while. His background is actually public safety before he worked at Concord Park, and he's had a lot of interaction already with our COA. So we're excited to have him join our team. We also have a new outreach coordinator, Amanda Wooton, who started last week. I wanted to mention that we had a very successful Patriots' Day parade last week. We had a beautiful day, a great turnout. I think we had a lot of entries in the parade, and it was a great opportunity for our staff to try out crowd management techniques and new things that we'll see more of next year. On Friday, April 19th, last Friday, we also had an internal summit in preparation for next year's 250th event. And we had the Chair of the 250th Committee, Gary Clayton, and the Vice Chair, Rob Monroe, who joined a team of, I think there probably were about 35 or so staff members. And we heard from the committee about their events and walked through a lot of the public safety aspects of the events that we will be seeing next year. So that was particularly helpful. I wanted to mention also, I should have mentioned first, that the COA is having its annual volunteer appreciation event on Thursday, May 2nd, from 4:00 to 5:30. I know that select board members would be welcome. This is an event that I have attended. It's a really wonderful event, an opportunity just to thank the many, many seniors that volunteer time at the COA. And I think I wanted to give Megan a few minutes just to provide a quick update on any MCI Concord happenings.
Sure, thank you. We started a series of biweekly meetings with DCAM, Project Manager Paul Lillahagen, and Abby Vladek, who's the Director of Public Private Development Partnerships. So at our meeting about a week and a half ago, we also had Mary Hartman and Legislative Aid Kyle Stapleton for Representative Cataldo. And it's just kind of a coordination meeting so that we are all on the same page about the work that's on the docket and how we're moving forward. This was more of an introductory meeting, and we also talked about the Select Board Committee's charge and the work that they're expected to accomplish and how that fits into the work that DCAM is starting to do. And I also wanted to mention that we're working to put together some maps created to show different aspects of the site and the surrounding area. They should be on the website in the next week or so. We're doing some final edits, but they're going to highlight transportation and mobility, environmental conditions in open space, land use and zoning, and cultural and historical resources. So if you're subscribed to our webpage, you'll be notified when those have been uploaded. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about that? So you talked about the town committee that we're forming, and what was DCAM's reaction to that?
They were interested in how everyone was going to work together, I think. But I think that they, to be a strong partner for the Town of Concord is to have an understanding about kind of the guiding principles for what Concord citizens would like to see there. And so I think that, and Mary chime in, but I think they felt it was a positive first step to starting to gather that information and work together so that we can here in Concord understand kind of the hopes and dreams and realities of the site so that when it comes to times to discuss it with the state, they're kind of on sure footing here about the plan.
Exactly, yeah. I would just add to that, that I think they see the work that the Advisory Board is going to do as actually helping them so that, again, they'll know, you know, right from the start, what the town wants. They asked us some questions about how we're going to do community outreach, and they had some good ideas about how to help us with that. And yes, we have work to do to kind of figure out who's going to do what moving forward, but I think we'll work that out.
Great.
Yeah.
Sounds great.
Okay. My report, I'll start off with an apology for scheduling tonight's meeting on the first night of Passover. It was an oversight in our scheduling. It's been on our schedule since November, and nobody noticed. And unfortunately, we had a public hearing that had already been noticed for this evening, so we were going to have to open that hearing in any event and be here. I want to congratulate the Public Ceremonies Committee for the, actually, the great job they did on Patriots' Day and on Miriam's Corner. And that, and those events are really now being managed by a working group which is composed of members of the 250th Executive Committee and the Public Ceremonies Committee. And it's been very well organized, and with the cooperation of Jason, when he was in the IT Department, they put together a really effective input system for receiving applications for participants in the parade. And the most, one of the most remarkable things about the parade this year is that the high school band was back in our parade. And it will be bigger and better next year because the high schools still had not developed the facilities for a marching band, but had the pep band, which did a great job in the It's worth noting that the Board of Appeals has approved the comprehensive permit for the Novo project in Baker Avenue, and that we are meeting with the Conservation Law Foundation on the Hanscom Field issue later this week. We've enlisted the assistance of the Conservation Law Foundation in pursuing the alternatives for that project, and we will be talking about that later. I also want to mention the fact that we've had a really terrific response to our Concord 250 Corporation, the nonprofit corporation that we have set up to receive institutional and personal contributions for activities for the 250th. And the coins, the souvenir coins that have been produced have been a great hit, and they are selling very well, and we have had to make a second batch of them. And so they are available for sale at the Middlesex Savings Bank and
Visitor Center.
Where?
Visitor Center.
And the Visitor Center. So, and finally, I want to say that as a result of the recent election, I want to thank so many people who have sent me notes and letters thanking me and giving me support for the work that I've done with the board. So we move on to liaison reports.
I have a question, Henry. For the corporation that was set up to receive the contributions to the 250th, what's the process to spend those funds? How will that work?
We don't have a process yet. It may depend on how much money we have and how much, and what the needs are, but I think that the guiding principle is that it would be most used primarily for expenses that either the town cannot or will not support in connection with the activities. One of the things I think is probably, one of my most important priorities, that is probably to sponsor or to create a very, a very comprehensive printed program book for the event, which would give us the opportunity to not only have a memento of the event, but also to thank all of the people who've contributed their efforts and their resources to make this a success.
So is the Executive Committee involved in the decisions about how the money will be spent?
No. I mean, there will be input from them, but it is definitely not, it is an independent nonprofit organization, which is not, has no, it has some overlap of management, but it is not, it is, it's on its own.
Well, is there a board? Like, who makes the decision?
There is a Board of Directors, which consists of Gary Clayton, who is the President of the Executive Committee, Rick Loughlin, who is the Treasurer both of the Corporation and the 250th, John Arena, who is a member of the Parade Committee and the 250th, and with me as the President.
Four people altogether.
We're missing a fifth. There's five of you. There's you.
And there's me, right.
Right, Gary, Rick, John.
And me.
That's four.
And there's another, wasn't there five directors?
Gary, Rick, John, and me. There may just be four.
So there's no process outlined in the documents, the Articles of Incorporation, that address how the money will be spent?
Well, just an issue for the purpose of supporting the activities in relation to the 250th anniversary.
I guess I'm a little bit concerned because this was a town committee that was established for a town event, and yet I don't see the oversight to spend the money.
This is not a town committee, the corporation. It's not a town committee.
I understand this corporation's not, but wasn't the corporation set up in support of the town committee?
It was set up in support of the activities relating to the 250th anniversary. It is running essentially in parallel. And it is the one that is, for instance, paying the expenses of the coins that are being sold and the revenues from those are going back into the corporation.
Can you tell us about how much money we're talking about?
At this point, we have received $40,000 of contributions, and we have pledges for another 75.
So is this kind of analogous to how we have, like, Friends of the COA, Friends of the Library?
You could call it that, yeah.
It's a nonprofit, but it's not the same as the Board of Directors on the library or the COA, or is that how it works?
I think that's a reasonable analogy.
Do those work well?
Do they?
I don't know, that's what I'm asking. I don't know.
I just think it should be really clear when people donate, who they're donating to and how it works.
Well, the acknowledgement letters that we send out for the contributions are very, very clear on that matter.
So if I buy a commemorative coin, where does that fund go to?
The coins, the institutions that are selling them, I think, are receiving a portion of it, and the balance goes back into the corporation to support the activities of the corporation.
And the $50,000, I think that was pledged from Middlesex Bank? Is that one of the pledges for the corporation? Or is that directly going to the 250th?
No. The, they have pledged $50,000, of which we have received 25, and the balance is to come next year.
To the corporation?
To the corporation. So can we move on to the liaison reports?
Yes.
Okay, I could go. I don't think I'll take very long. So I attended the Ellen Garrison Event on April 14th. It was an excellent event, big turnout, very moving, really well done while we're in the armory. I also attended by Zoom the MBTA Advisory Committee that Mark recommended, and CEO Phil Eng spoke. He talked about how they're having a new corporate culture, new hires, and an emphasis on maintenance. So that sounded like they're going in the right direction, let's hope. And they're saying that our commuter rail is now at 90% of the pre-pandemic level, which is the highest in the United States. So things are moving along. CPW, you probably know that EPA came out with those new PFAS standards of four parts per trillion, which is essentially zero and really difficult to measure. So luckily, we have a Public Works Director, Alan Cathcart, who's been watching this carefully and is prepared, and we're ready to go for town meeting to, you know, fund cleanup for this. And we'll be talking later in this meeting, I guess, about Articles 38 and 39, the cell towers, and the CPW Board talked for a while about that. We'll also be talking tonight about the Finance Committee and the school budget and the Hanscom letter. So I'm not going to go over any of those items right now.
I'll go, I'll go. The Solar Task Force, when we wrote the charge, we asked them to deliver a report to the Select Board in April of 2024, that's now. So they're asking for an extension, a very small extension, which is fine. And so I'm expecting that report to be done in May. They're working on it. I think they're close to completing it. And they will complete the report, submit it to the Select Board, and then come in and talk to us about that, what they found in probably June. The Planning Board has two active applications, well, actually, one isn't, there was an application for some residential units and one retail space on 166 Comm Ave. That's the parcel with the old gas station right next to the Shoburk Bakery. It went through the Planning Board many, many times, many conversations, and the applicant has withdrawn the application without prejudice. So that's delayed. The other application that the Planning Board's been thinking about is the one for a subdivision at 1053 Main Street, and I think it's four houses, four or five houses in a subdivision that cuts off of Main Street.
I think there's one existing house and then four.
Four new ones, right. And that was approved, so that's moving ahead.
Where is that exactly?
It's right across from the entrance to Concord Green, actually, on Main Street.
Okay, all right.
Ag Day had their spring forum last week on Thursday night. It was very well attended. The presenter was good. The best part was the panel discussion with the farmers about the impact of climate change on agriculture. So that was, it was, it's funny, some people came away and thought they did a, it was very dire, and other people thought, well, it wasn't so bad. But I think people enjoyed it. The other thing that's happening is they've got some new members, which is great because the Ag Committee is getting a lot more energy, I think, more energy. And then the other thing that's happening is Stone Soup, which has been one of their strong supporters, is asking for a little bit more help from the Ag Committee as far as what they want to do going forward. Lastly, I attended the Housing Roundtable, and I'll defer to Linda to talk about that. So I'm done.
Linda?
I too attended the Ellen Garrison Event. Yes, indeed, it was well done. The Housing Roundtable event met, and the individual housing partners were there, as well as others represented. And I think spent a fair amount of time reviewing the projects that are in the queue at this point, and also talking about the MCI closing and staying on top of that as we go forward. I also happened to go to the Concord Historical Commission meeting because I've been following, they're working on a preservation plan. And the reason I went there is because I had also gone to the Historic Topics meeting earlier in the week, and they continued some of that discussion with the members. And one of the, and I just mentioned this to Megan, one of the things that caught my attention is that of the four new members that we just voted in, the alternate members that we just voted in for that committee, there was one person in particular, Lauren Meyer, who clearly has had a lot of experience working with environmental review processes previously, and had some very specific wording and tags that can be used in our responses. So I've encouraged Megan to meet up with her and talk with her about that. And so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mark, do you have anything?
Yeah. Just, I wanted to thank the organizers of the Cooler Concord Event on Saturday. It was relocated to the high school because of the weather in the morning, and it was very successful. It was busy right through the end. I was there for about the last hour. Members of the town staff from the light plant, Public Works, Natural Resources, among possibly others, were there. So there's a real good showing from the town departments, as well as any number of committees and groups around town. So really educational, they were offering EV drives and demos and a lot of great information about that. So that was Saturday. I don't remember, so the last middle school building committee meeting was on the 11th. I don't think I've read out since that, and the progress continues to be good on the middle school with Building C in particular really, really taking shape, and it really starts to look like a building. I drove by there yesterday, and one of the things that I hadn't quite recognized about that building is that you can really see three sides of it as it comes together, which is interesting because the other building was just sort of a facade from the road. So I think it's going to be very dramatic as it goes forward. So, and the Warner's Pond Task Force is also continuing to meet and working on criteria for what our goals should be there. So that'll be it for now.
Okay. Okay. The next item is the Prison Outreach Committee. Oh, I, yes, Liz. This is something a little bit different for you, wasn't it?
Yes, exactly. So I'm Liz Russ, and I'm here not for housing, but as the Chair of the Concord Prison Outreach, I'm the Chair of their Board of Directors. So I'm here to talk about the Concord Prison Outreach, the Concord Prison Cemetery Project that the Concord Prison Outreach Agency is spearheading. There's something in your packet, and you might wonder why I'm coming here with such an interesting human interest project, just a little light item for your review.
We're always happy to have you here.
Well, thank you, thank you. So it involves a number of components, and one of them is a contemplative seating area in the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And the town, as you are, is the approver of anything in that, in the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail right of way. So that's why I'm here. The project is a little bit broader than that. There's a couple of components. We're doing an online gallery with the special collections of the library, which would house biographies of, there's 217 men buried in the cemetery. So that's one component there. There's this, you know, actual physical part of the project, which is the seating area in the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail part. And then there is what we call community curating. So we'll have some events and some information to educate the community. The seating area is, as I say, the physical part, and there are CPA funds for that that are going to be part of the town meeting, this coming town meeting. And so with your approval for this phase of the design, it would go forward for construction. Now, this would be for Concord Prison Outreach, and they're a separate 501(c)(3), so it's not public construction, so the contract would be with them. And would look to go in for, you know, contracting estimates and hopefully get the whole thing done in time for the fall. This is one of those projects that you work on for two years, and the construction takes about three days.
Is that cemetery still in active use?
No, no. The last person was buried there in 1996. So the first person was in 1878, when the cemetery opened. It's kind of small, and it goes up the hill there. I don't know if you're familiar. And then there's a lot of trees with a lot of roots, so it really kind of ends there and not able to bury people. And most of the people of the 217, in fact, 70% of them were actually from Boston and were, came out by train and were buried there. So it was just happened to be here. And we've been working very closely with the Department of Corrections. They've approved the design and are committed to maintaining the cemetery itself. So this project doesn't actually touch the cemetery proper, and they've been maintaining it for, you know, hundreds of years or 100-plus years, and they'll continue to do that.
The Department of Corrections?
Correct, yes. So the farm, the maintenance people at the NECC do that as part of their grounds maintenance.
Well, the most interesting part of this is the Well, the most interesting part of this is the biographies that are being created.
Yes, yes. So we.
And it suggests that, that a way to, that a way to make that information available would be something that is, might be applicable to many of our other historical monuments that have a long and complicated history, which is through the use of QR codes, have access to material that would be on the town website that would be, you know, carefully curated and verified and, but easily available, not by having to go to the website as such, but actually you stand there and you look at it and you say, what is this? And then you can see it.
Right, so exactly that. We, so at the, at the, at the, the seating area will be an interpretive panel, and there'll be a QR code there, which will bring you to the online gallery housed on the Special Collections from the library, which will bring you to the place where it'll have the biographies.
Do you have, have you identified and do you have biographies for all 217?
Close to.
Wow.
Close to. So we have been working on that for about a year and a half, doing all the genealogical research. So the, it starts with the handwritten ledger from the Department of Corrections with the name and the dates, and then you go from there.
Great.
So we've gotten a lot of information. There's also a series of panels that Mass College of Art students have made for each man who's buried there, and that will also be available in the online gallery. And we've been working very closely with Anka Voss. And I think in this packet, there might be the QR code to our prototype.
There is a link in the packet.
Yes, exactly. So, yes, so right there, that little QR code into our rudimentary prototype, so.
Looks like there's about four of the plots that are currently described. They look very interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to mention that Liz presented maybe a month ago to the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, and they loved the idea, unanimously supported it, so that was great.
And then the Mass DOT, we have a letter from their support as well.
There's a terrific amount of work on this. And, you know, no one's ever going to know the full extent of the work that's gone into this. Just a couple of questions. And one is, there was mentioned several times in your material about a videotape. Has that been produced already, and where is that going to be accessed?
It has not been produced, and I think that we are going to probably have that off of the CPO website. We have really too, we could do it on the Special Collections. And I think we're going to leave the Special Collections for things that are really related to the cemetery itself. And things that are related to the project, we're going to put somewhere else. So, but we're still working on that. We're doing fundraising now for the project, and so the video is part of that.
So that was one of the other questions I was going to ask, and that is, besides the CPC funds that you already have and that you're also going to be getting, obviously you're doing some additional fundraising. So do you have a process for managing that so that all of that goes to the project?
Yes, so we have separate accounts in the CPO where we're holding those funds. We've raised $8,000 already for that, and, yeah. So we have a bookkeeper who segregates that and does that in separate on our books and records there.
And then, you know, you're relying, you mentioned you're relying on the prison for the ongoing maintenance and, you know, and that also relates to some work for the inmates there as well. And so you, at this point, do you see that, you don't see a window closing on that? That's sort of open in terms of how long they'll be able to do that?
They have committed to doing that indefinitely.
Yeah, okay. And then just one other question. And again, I know the process was incredible to get all these biographies. Were any attempts made to contact descendants? No. But you've had no, at this point, you've had no feedback to the contrary, so you're, yeah, okay, good.
No. And, I mean, so you might be interested to know, so that the markers of the cemetery are just the numbers and the moniker that tells you what prison the person came from. And the names are not there, and it's really to protect the identity of the person so that people who might be connected to them, maybe they're victims or other people that they've harmed, don't come and desecrate the graves.
That's right, okay.
I think that department is where I was going.
Yes, so we don't, so the Department of Corrections is very sensitive to that. So they've been, we've been working very closely with them. So while we're publishing these biographies, we're not doing, you know, a panel there listing their names at the cemetery. So it's kind of one step removed. So it's public information, but you have to work a little bit to get to it.
Did any of them vote in the last election?
And we are not, in the biographies, we're not including what people's crimes were and why they were in prison. So it's really just, you know, their lives.
So it says here that the area will be bounded with boulders to discourage public access. So right now you can get up there really easily.
There's a path, yes.
Yeah, there's a little path.
Yeah, so it was, it was everything close. How far could we go without, no trespassing sign?
Right.
Right, essentially.
Okay.
So you could see in the picture there.
You could still get in there.
Yes, it's open, but it's not, there's a little hill there.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Okay. Move to approve the concept design and notice to proceed to the design development phase for the Concord Prison Cemetery.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to the public art items.
Hello, Mimi Greeny, Economic Vitality Manager for the town. I've got two presentations. One is for the execution of painted signal boxes. So this was a project executed by the West Concord Junction Cultural District. The Select Board approved their initial call for art for designs, and the committee has selected the three finalists, though they're in your packet. One is by Emily Morrison, which is Days of Old Concord for Maine and Baker. The next one is Ivy Randall, which is a bird's eye view of West Concord for Maine and Church. And then Steve Romundo for a design called Connections for Maine and Commonwealth. I did get a communication that the HDC, the signal box that's on the corner of Maine and Church, it abuts the West Concord Historic District. So there's some clarification needed whether the HDC needs to approve the design for that. Helene Clayton, who's the coordinator of this project, had checked previously and was told that this is in the public right of way and isn't within the Historic District. But the HDC, at least the Chair, is reviewing that.
So it's in a public way?
It's on a sidewalk. It's a town-owned signal box that runs the.
Right, and what's the boundary of the Historic District? I mean, is, why is this, I don't understand why this is in question.
The HDC thinks that they're not, in my view, it would, the border would be along the property line. So the Harvey Wheeler and the Fowler are both considered historic properties, and they make up a Historic District. That and the church are all, it's just a tiny little Historic District in West Concord.
But it doesn't require a building permit, right? And I don't think the HDC has any jurisdiction if there's no building permit to be issued.
The HDC is requiring review for anything that's in place for more than 48 hours. So they are reviewing sign, temporary signs. The temporary art, that's my next project, doesn't require a building permit, and they're having review. They have a lot of things under their jurisdiction.
Who gave them that authority?
That's, or my time.
I mean, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the statute that creates the HDC merely says that no building permit shall be issued without a certificate of appropriateness. So it would not, if it's an activity that requires no building permit, it doesn't require a certificate of appropriateness, but that's just me.
I think this is very similar to the discussion that ended up ensuing when we were talking about the Turcentanieri signs. If it's in the Historic District and it has anything to do with the aesthetics, it's there.
Well, this is an issue.
Well, I think it's a broader issue as far as defining what's the role of the HDC.
Can we have Steph check, find out?
So I did have a communication with Anne and Elizabeth last Thursday, and they were going to get back to me, and I haven't heard back yet, about, at least in terms of whether the signal box is within or without.
Well, we can have an ongoing conversation about this.
Right.
But the, aside from this being three historic properties, the, is this, we're talking about the corner of Main Street where Fowler and Harvey Wheeler are. Is that actually part of a, of a actually defined Historic District? Because I'm a little uncomfortable with the notion of just saying because there's a couple of historic properties next to each other, that's suddenly a district.
It is a defined district, so if you look up the Historic Districts map, that is defined as one of the defined areas.
Well, I think that.
Just those three little parcels are kind of called.
If this is something that needs our approval, and we would otherwise approve it, we can certainly give you the approval, subject to any additional permits that are necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be my request.
But I think we should find out for future where these other authorities for the HDC are coming from. Are they in the state law? Are they in APP or whatever?
I can send them to you. There's guiding documents on the webpage, and there's Historic District Design Guidelines. And that is a document that I think was created by the HDC. But I, there's a few different guiding documents that I can send along.
Guiding documents?
Yeah.
Who creates those?
There was a, about 10 or 15 years ago, the HDC put together a fairly comprehensive book of guidelines so that people would have a better idea of what they were likely to approve and what they were likely not to approve. But I don't know if that really has any, gives them any authority, which goes beyond the powers of the actual statute that created.
Right, that's the question, right.
But that may be something that we probably will never settle by our discussion tonight.
Not tonight, but in the future, yeah. So I think we should go with what you suggested. We can, we can move to approve, subject to what are other permits that are needed.
Okay. Are we?
And come back to us if this is going to run into more trouble. If this runs into trouble, would you come back to us?
Sure.
Can I just ask one other question about this? Mimi, I think in the material you provided, you talk about the fact that should there be vandalism on the design, that the Public Works Department would have the final authority for selecting a new design?
No, the contract with the artist is if there, if it needs sort of just a little touch-up, that the artist would be permitted to touch up if there should be some.
Yeah, I did read that.
If there is, for any reason, it needs to be removed. For some rea, the, the, the designs don't look very controversial, but if they should prove to be controversial, if they get damaged for whatever reason, the town manager has got authority to remove them at any time for any purpose and could designate the Public Works to repaint them. Or if there is an opportunity, if they're particularly beloved and the town wanted to commission the artist to re-execute it or to put a due design, it's a lot of flexibility. But it allows the town to be, the town manager to be the authority on that.
I have a few, I have a few questions. So, Mimi, when, when is the artist going to be selected?
The three artists have been selected.
No, I mean, what, so is there, are you going to pick one from those three?
There's three different boxes.
Oh, three, oh, got it, okay. It says here that you're going to engage with neighbors to, on May 15th? I just want to point out that one of those boxes is right next to Concord Green. So if you want to notify the people who live in Concord Green, I could get you the email address and.
So this is a West Concord Cultural District project?
So they should.
So they're going to be going around and chatting.
So they should, I could give them the name of the property manager and get a blast out because I think people would be interested.
Great. Yeah, right now, the, we're hoping to, DPW will prime the boxes in early June, and our hope is to paint them at the end of June.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Now, I think we had three projects, did we?
So that's Project One, do you want to vote on them separately?
Yes, probably.
We have to vote.
Yeah.
Move to approve the request to execute public art on town-owned property in West Concord, painting of traffic signal boxes by June 30th, 2024, and anticipate it to remain for a period of three years.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you want to say pending?
No.
I think we.
Pending the authorization for?
Well, we're moving to approve it. We're moving to approve it.
Okay.
That's fair enough, because in any case where.
We're not waiting to hear, we're approving.
Where subsequent permits are required, like from the NRC or from, you know, or the, or any other authority, those are independent, you know, those are independent permits that, if required, they have to obtain.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, number two.
So the second proposal, do we vote?
We need to vote.
You'd vote?
I'm sorry. I moved, was there a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The second proposal is the one, and it's been pending for a while, so it actually predates my arriving in Concord. The town received a grant from the New England Foundation for the Arts and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for temporary public art. This is for Monument Square, Parcel 1693, across the way. So the three town staff people, the whole concept behind this is to create higher capacity for municipalities to commission public art. So Donna, the Communications Manager, Beth Williams, myself, did a bunch of training with them to understand procurement rules, contracting rules. So we did a call for public art that was issued back last August or September, I believe. And then we narrowed it down to a smaller field. We had a set of finalists that presented at a public forum in early March. And both the attendees at the public forum and the steering group were all near unanimous selecting Liz Helfer's design, which is, I presented. It was put before the Historic Districts Commission with the design, which is two sort of old-timey-looking benches. So it's a custom cast of the arms in cast iron and then wooden slats. So if you can think of like a traditional one, one labeled with Henry David Thoreau and the other one with Ellen Garrison. And each of the figures are cut out in plexiglass in a silhouette in a one way. So if you think of like interrogation rooms, how they are mirrored on one side and reflective on the other, or transparent. So the idea is that you could sit down next to these people and either see yourself reflected in them or kind of see the world through them. And the idea is to sort of envision, if you were to have a conversation with them, what these two people might say to each other, and to sort of think a little bit about Concord at a time when these people were both residents here and what it says about our time now. The initial call for art, we had thought that the 250th Permanent Memorial Committee was going to break ground before the end of this year. They now are not going to be ready at the earliest until next spring. And when we did the first call for art, we thought we might get a lot of very ephemeral type of projects. We wrote it pretty loosely. Liz Helfer's design with the two benches is very robustly built, which we're really excited about. So our proposal is to actually extend the installation a little longer. So it would be, we're proposing for it to be installed this September, and if we're stay in place until next spring after the 250th. and/or whenever the permanent memorial is ready to break ground and move us out. And that the benches would be owned by the town, so they potentially could be put in other places. And already Thoreau Farm and the Robinson House, Robinson House are saying that they would like it as a temporary installation, as a place to sort of have another way of envisioning it. But for right now, we're just wanting to do this first temporary installation in Monument Square. It would be embedded into the lawn just with small footings with the guidance of Public Works. The HDC did review the application. They wanted the application split. The, I had proposed signage that was an A-frame sign and then the same sign that DPW generally uses because it sort of felt like it matched things that were already there. They requested that we split it. So they did approve the benches, but they want us to do another application to approve the signage that we'll do later when we get to that point.
The pictures are really lovely. It's a great idea. I'm wondering, why is it a temporary installation? Why is it not permanent?
So the guidelines for the grant that we received was meant for temporary. We weren't expecting somebody to come up with such a robust one. If Concord wants to make it permanent, they could. We're not quite sure. The plexiglass should hold up pretty well. And I've asked for a second set of the silhouettes because it's easier to make two when you're making two batches of cookies. So if they do need to be replaced, they are pretty expensive. So we'll see. That might be an issue for how permanent it might be.
So the total cost, according to the table attached, shows $20,000. Is all of that money coming from the grant?
So there's actually two grants. There's a grant from the New England Foundation for the Arts and Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and then funding from Massachusetts Cultural Council. So those two grants together.
And does that cover the entire expense? So this is not a budget item for us?
No. And there's actually some additional funding for us to do some community programming. So we've, the Concord Center Cultural District Task Force has just issued a call for creative programs to invite people to come up with ideas. So maybe there could be some actors that could portray those two people. There could be some educators. There could be some, you know, a podcast to accompany it. We're hoping folks, maybe somebody wants to commission a music performance that could be there for next, for this fall while the piece is in place.
Okay.
What's that?
I just have one quick, sorry, Mary.
Go ahead.
One quick question. That is, Mimi, in the material that was provided, the artist mentions that when the light is right, you know, you can see through the plexiglass in a certain way. Is there any intentions of additional lighting in that area? No? Okay.
What's that?
Yep.
Wonderful project. I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Move to approve the request to execute public art on town-owned property in Concord Center Monument Square in September 2024 and anticipate it to remain through spring 2025 in coordination with the Concord 250th Permanent Memorial Subcommittee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right, now that we, we're not to seven o'clock.
We're not.
So we will move on to something, get us there to seven o'clock. And that would be, I guess, the next item on the agenda is the Hanscom letter, isn't it?
No, that's going to take too long. How about the Article VII?
Okay.
The one we're going to do at 7:30?
This thing right here.
Right there.
Oh, you mean the?
The Budget Line Item Adjustments.
Okay.
I think I can, I can do this in a few minutes.
No, we want you to take a little longer.
Okay. I'll drag it out as long as I can.
About six minutes.
You sound like the moderator. I think that's how much time she gave me. So I.
You can't say it in two minutes.
You're all using my time.
It's their time, right.
I did just circulate a handout because I don't think that ended up in your packet. We will have this handout available for town meeting, and it will be in color. When I printed it, it wasn't in color. I didn't want to waste the paper. We realized last week, I think, that we never presented, never actually presented the budget adjustment article, what we actually are going to request from town meeting during the public hearing, because at that time, we weren't 100% sure that we were going to move forward with this. So if you will recall back at annual town meeting last year or just prior to, we discovered in conjunction with the Finance Committee that there was an overstatement in the new funds that would be allowed, excuse me, provided to the town budget under the fiscal '24 budget guideline. And that amount was $515,402. And because of the timing of when this was discovered, you know, we spent a little, a little bit of time trying to figure out how we might allocate that and then just felt that it really was too much to rush through it. And so we essentially plugged that amount against the town's line item number one, which is general government. We made a statement about that at annual town meeting with an indication that we would have to work at this, bring it back for corrective action. That's what, that's what this article is all about. With any budget adjustments, we're not increasing the budget provided to the town. We're just reallocating the appropriation that was approved by town meeting last year. And so there are only two ways to adjust a budget on the town side once it's been approved by town meeting. The first is by additional town meeting action, or the second is under mass general law. At the end of the fiscal year, there's a process by which the budget can be adjusted with the approval of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. So the way that I like to look at budget adjustments is if you have the opportunity to take it to town meeting, that is the preferred method. If you don't have the opportunity to take it to town meeting because, you know, it just happened, the need for the adjustment arose later in the fiscal year after town meeting, then you follow the second process. But because we have the opportunity to take it to town meeting, that's what we're doing here. And what you can see from this handout is that the increase is essentially reversing the placeholder adjustment. And then the decrease shows how we would allocate that amount across the different lines. And the allocation is roughly in proportion to the share of the budget held by each of those lines. It's not exact, but it is, it is roughly proportionate. And I will just mention that because we knew we had this issue going into the budget, we've been able to plan for it all year. We are essentially able to incorporate these adjustments through planned underspending in certain lines, through budget vacancies. We have held some positions open because we knew we had this issue. And then we've had some attrition and people coming in at lower salaries, so we've had some savings. And I will mention again, because we knew we had this issue, we did incorporate these adjustments into our fiscal '25 budget planning process.
Any questions?
I have, yeah, Carrie, thank you. I understand through planning and, you know, all the reasons you said in terms of holding back on some position, filling some positions earlier, attrition, et cetera. I understand how you have the decrease. Can you just explain to me the increase of the $15,000? That's against, that's against the 2024 budget, correct?
So we, the $515,000, that is at the?
No, I'm looking at the increase column.
Yeah.
Right, the $515,402.
Okay, so what? All right, I've got it. Thank you.
So that.
Actually.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I'm not sure I have it. Can I just try saying it in my words and see if I understand it right?
Yeah.
It seems like last year, after the guideline had been published, but before town meeting, we discovered that the amount that was allocated to the town in the guideline was $515,000 higher than it should have been.
Yes.
So you took it out of your projected spending, and that's what you brought to town meeting?
Yes.
Right. But you didn't have enough time to go back and appropriate that across all of your departments because the budget process had been done? Is that?
Yes. I mean, this literally was a week before town meeting.
Okay, okay. So you took it all out of one line, and what you're doing here is you're going back and saying, if we had had time to do this and if we had had the right guideline number, this is how we would have come in with our budget.
Yes.
Is that right?
So the general government line was essentially underfunded when we passed the budget last year at 4.9. So it needs to be increased to 5.3 in order to cover the expenses that are going to come through the general government line. So the general government line is also absorbing, if you want to think about it, $97,000 of that cut that needed to be made. And then the rest of the lines that we see here were left alone from, and they're now being asked to come in slightly lower by the amounts indicated in the decrease column.
Yeah, okay, okay. Good, good.
So I have a question. It's great that you had the opportunity to plan for it all year and looks like some good planning was done. At the end of every year, there's like a reversion of anything that's left over, goes into wherever, wherever, and finally ends up in free cash. So does this mean that we may end up a year from now with less free cash than we would have because it's absorbing? Like, some of this might have gone into a reversion?
So what I will say about free cash is we try to budget as conservative as possible on revenue estimates. And I think thinking that free cash will increase because revenue, actual revenue came in higher than originally projected is a good thing. But to assume that we are going to continue to underspend budgets and that you will generate, that the town will generate free cash from budget underspending is probably not a good move.
Okay.
Okay. Do we need to do anything about this, or is this just something that's going to be on the warrant?
Well, it will be on the warrant. You will be asked to make a recommendation. So if you're comfortable making a recommendation this evening, you could do that, or you could wait.
Should we do it now or wait until we go through?
Let's do it now.
Okay.
Move to recommend affirmative action on Article VII.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
And you took exactly the right amount of time.
Perfect. Thank you.
So that, so now we.
We move to open the public hearing and at the same time, continue it.
Yes. So would you want to, want to make the motion?
I will. Move to open the public hearing for a grant of location request for a poll petition at 1053 Main Street and continue the hearing to the next regularly scheduled Select Board meeting on Monday, May 13, 2024, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is it easy?
And why are we continuing this?
We're doing that because the petition for this, for moving this poll identified the site by poll number, but did not include the street address. And therefore, the, therefore, the public, the mailed public notices were sent to the wrong people. And so, so although the published, the printed public notice was adequate because everyone sees it, the, we had to give the applicant the chance to, or we had to give, we had to send the mailed notices to the abutters to that site before we could hold the hearing and at least have a valid, grant a valid permit. Now, also, would have been, I would have had to recuse myself from participating in that deliberation because I happen to have a relationship with the owner of the property that goes back about probably almost 10 years. But I will, that will not be a problem when we have our next meeting because I will, I have been excused by the voters of Concord. So then we move on.
You've been recused.
I have been, yes, but not eliminated.
Don't have your sense of humor. That's great.
All right, so having disposed of that, we move on to, like, the letter of public comment on the, on Hanscom. And I think we had a updated draft of that, which was circulated late this afternoon. And I had just, I had a couple of comments on that.
Okay, so.
Is that what's in the packet?
Not quite.
It was, there was a draft of it. In the packet, there were like five different letters. It was.
But the one coming from us, is that?
Okay.
There were two. There's one that Linda had drafted and one that Terry had drafted.
Okay, well, maybe I can explain.
And the one that you had drafted was replaced by an updated draft, which was circulated late this afternoon.
Right. So there's three different things that we need to do with this Hanscom thing. So the first one is the letter Henry's talking about. And the only change is everywhere, I had three different people recommend this, so I decided to send in a revised draft. Everywhere where it said the term "final EIR," Final Environmental Impact Report, I've changed it as recommended to Revised Draft EIR because I didn't know that we could request that. So there's about six places in the letter that I have changed from "final" to "revised draft."
Okay.
And sometimes changed a little bit of the grammar to make the sentence work. That is the only change. Other than that, it's the same letter.
All right, well.
And so that's the one that we got?
That's the one we got. But I have, I have just some very brief comments on that draft. And one is on the bottom of page two, the plural of aircraft is aircraft, not aircrafts, plural with an S.
Okay, wait a second. I don't.
It is, it says, "omissions of aircrafts." They are not emissions of aircrafts.
Last line of the second to last paragraph.
Where are we?
Aircrafts.
Second to last paragraph. I must be on a different letter than you.
This is the one we got at 4:00 PM this afternoon.
Right.
Okay, and then you go to about other.
Wait a second.
Is that the one that's in the packet or not?
Yes.
It is.
Page 51 of the packet. If you, if you're looking at it online.
It's the third, it's the third line up.
Yeah, third line from the bottom or the?
Third line up from the bottom.
Bottom of the section.
Yours is, was.
Here it is. Mine's on page three. I see, "aircraft in flight." Get rid of the S. Got it.
Okay.
One other thing is that on the next page, the paragraph that begins in conclusion, I would say, "serious flaws and omissions."
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Oh, good. Yeah.
Thank you.
And then there's one thing that may also, I think there's one other thing that needs to be mentioned. And that is that because, I can't say this in a simple sentence, but just because, once the construction takes place because of the rules of the FAA, we have no control over what activities are carried on, when, how, and what intensity they are carried on. And therefore, the only means we have to control the activities is to control the construction that takes place. is to control the construction that takes place.
Right. So you've made that point several times. That's a great point. And I don't know though, if it belongs in this letter about.
Well, I think it does because the point is, one of the reasons, I mean, a lot of, a lot of the objections here relate to performance and activities, generation of, you know, CO2 and particulate matter and storage of fuel and amount of traffic. And so the importance of that is that we have no control over many of those things, such as the times at which, the quantity of flights, the times at which they take place and so on. So the only means that we have to control the, the activities is to control what is constructed there. Now, I think that probably could be put into one sentence. But I have, I didn't do it.
So I, so we could add something like that the town does not have direct control
Over the activities.
over the quantity type or schedule of flights. Our only control or leverage or our only voice or something is during construction of these facilities.
Well, not during. It is.
I mean, is.
Is the only control is the, the facilities that are constructed.
Mm-hmm. Our only point of control.
Where it controls the overall capacity of the facilities that are constructed.
Okay. So do you want me to add it, add this in? Where, where do you want to put it?
Well, it should go probably in the conclusion of paragraph someplace because that is one of the, that is a conclusion.
Or it could go maybe in the beginning saying why we want to comment or something.
I would, I would leave it to you. I just, I.
Okay.
It's important to say that because people say, well, you know, we can still ask them to limit the amount of noise or the so on. So, but make it clear that this is.
So maybe something like, you know, Concord is concerned that there will be adverse conditions from the construction related to noise and traffic and it could be other things, something like that? I don't know if that's what we're trying to capture.
Well, I think what we're trying to say is we want to be heard now because that's when we have a voice. That's the point.
Right. So I'm, I'm going to try and put that, oh, you know where I think I'm going to put that? If, if this is okay with everybody, right in the first paragraph where it says, "We, the Select Board of Concord, wish to comment on the draft EIR for the proposed"
Yes.
"expansion, blah, blah, blah." Then, you know, "The town does not have direct control over the quantity type or schedule of flights. Our only point of control is now during the planning of the overall capacity of the facility."
Good. I think it's good.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, great.
That's good.
Yeah. And Terry, I thought it's a good letter. I, just one other suggestion. Since this letter is coming from Concord, under the CCs at the top, I think we should identify the name of our Concord Town Manager and the name of our Concord Deputy Town Manager since it's coming from Concord.
So, right. So Concord Town Manager Carrie LaFleur and Deputy Concord Town Manager Megan Zamudo.
I think this is set up for me to sign, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I already sent you all my comments and you incorporated them. So thank you.
I pretty much did, yeah.
You did. You pretty much did. So thank you. I like the tone of this letter too.
Yeah, well, good. Okay.
Lot of work.
Yeah, well, there was a lot going on and it actually leads into, there's two more things I have to talk about that are related to this, but. So I can make those changes and get it over to Shannon to put on letterhead.
Is, is going to be included as an appendix? The spreadsheet that might be put together?
Yes, that appendix, those comments from the town staff are excellent.
Yeah.
And I stole that format from one of the other letters where there's a big appendix. I think HFAC had a very long appendix.
They need to be printed on more pages.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll leave that to Shannon to get that formatted on letterhead.
Microscopic.
Right. That's probably why your page numbers were different because of the letterhead, but well, that's great.
I don't need a reason for my page numbers.
Whatever. Okay. All right. So the next item that's related to this, there is a HATS meeting on Thursday. And I, Linda, you, you are going to attend, I think. And I will be there, but I'm going to be late because I have another meeting that's not going to end by then. But Mark Sandin was asking me if the Select Board could take a look at the HATS letter and give preliminary okay to it because the other towns are planning to do that. And so that is also in your packet dated April 25. It's one of the letters in the packet and it's addressed to Rebecca Tepper, Secretary Environmental and Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. It's two pages long. It's got draft across it. Or maybe it's not in the packet. Shannon, did you send that out separately? I can't remember now.
54. I have 54.
I think the revised packet, it might be 57, but.
57?
It's the Rebecca Tepper, April 16.
Well, no, it should be April 25.
Oh.
Well, there was one letter in here that had no date.
I thought I distributed this letter separately to you all and perhaps it was not in the meeting packet. I thought the one.
I think that's right.
In the packet is the Bedford Select Board.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so what?
Letter.
So do we have it in our email?
You should have it in your email, but I can certainly resend it.
Okay.
Can you pull it up for us now?
Do you want to look on with me?
This is.
Have it printed. This is that letter we're talking about. It wasn't, it's not in the packet.
Yeah, that's where I saw it.
It's short.
Yeah. This is the draft HATS letter that they're going to be considering on Thursday. So if we have any comments, we want to give them to Linda now.
I think I did, but this really doesn't say anything different from what the other letters say, does it?
Right. So there's going to be a letter from Bedford, a letter from Concord, a letter from the other towns, a letter from HATS, that's, that's, a letter from HFAC. There's many different letters and it's.
It was emailed to you all on Sunday, the first.
Yeah, I remember reading this letter. did everybody get a chance to read this? Yes. It's.
Yeah, I'll say yes.
It's essentially asking for
Mary.
an increase in the, in the stringency, let's call it, of the air quality analysis. several different components and greenhouse and CO2 E measurements. And also an update on the ESBR. Data from the 2017 planning report to the 2022 planning report. Those were the main points, I think.
So the real significance of it is that there is one more letter.
Okay, so what's the process?
I didn't, I think the question to ask is, is, does anybody want to ask Linda, ask them to add anything or change anything about it?
That's the question.
Well, anything that needs to be said is going to, has been said in one or another or half a dozen of these letters. So I don't think there's any real point that needs to be made anymore. I think all the points have been made.
I think though, so that we don't repeat what seemed to have happened before is that if, if it would be helpful to be supported by an affirmation of our support for sending this, HATS sending this letter, then maybe we should do that.
Right. That's what they're looking for because what happened last summer was it went round and round that Concord wanted to add a few sentences and then it went back to the HATS and then another town changed it and that, and it took like three or four months to get finished.
That's right. That's right.
So they want to finish it. Does anyone have any problem with this letter? Does anyone want any changes made?
Send it.
I recommend that we, recommend the letter be sent as soon as is practical.
Great.
Before the postage rate goes up.
Yep. Got a forever stamp for it. We've got it done.
Okay. And my last.
And if there is a key phrase or something that does not substantially change the content of the letter, I can go ahead and recommend that?
Yes.
Right. Thank you. And then the third thing is the shortest thing. I just had a question about our packet tonight. At the very end of our packet, there are two letters to Hanscom, Mr. Jim Maravellius from Megan. And I just thought, I, I didn't know anything about these. And Megan, if it's all right, can you just explain what this was about? And I don't know why they were in the packet and.
Where are they?
Yeah, these were the fire station.
Oh, yes, exactly.
Very end of the packet.
Yeah, what's going on there?
Well, we were just, there are other projects that have nothing to do
Right.
with the north, the north hangar.
Right.
That as, I don't know if it's a matter of courtesy or necessity, the, I think it was the airbase actually, not the civil aviation facility, is doing a couple of things
Right.
that they're asking us for comments on.
Okay.
And I would assume that that is probably something that are, if there are any comments that are needed, that the town staff could make those comments.
Well, it looks like Megan has already answered, I think.
Yeah, I haven't sent them yet. So if there's, I, the, the letters, the request for comment, there was one that was sent to Carrie and there was one that was actually sent to Linda because they send everything to you. They're going to have to get a new name soon. And they asked for comments. So I, I sent, for the staff side of things, I sent it around to the staff and collected these comments and put together a draft letter. And, but they also sent one to the board. But as Henry mentioned, you know, it, it seems like this could, some of these comments, you might be sufficient with what is there. But you're, you can add to this if you'd like or send a separate letter since you were, addressed your own letter. But I, I just included it here before sending it, just to copy you all. So we're all on the same page about our correspondence.
Well, is this mostly technical stuff that the staff would deal with? Like specs on the size of the building, I see, and, and things like that? And, and not as much policy things that the board would deal with? Just trying to quickly figure out what this is all about.
Yeah, they're, they're two construction projects. They're, they're not in the town of Concord. So how is it impacting us? And, you know, I think, I think, I think there's probably questions you could ask. Why are you expanding the size of this, you know, fire department or like what's the purpose of some of these things? But what, the way I collected information was from more, more technical, how is this like a impact to the town of Concord? Like asking about some of the sustainability specifically. Questions about, you know, are you using diesel fuel? Like that's, that's the approach we took. If these are, if these items spark interest to the board about, you know, ongoing activities that, if you notice a pattern, I, I mean, I'm, that might be something you look into. But there, I believe these letters come from time to time about general updates or improvements or changes to items on, on the base.
So, you know, I'm assuming that we have the opportunity to respond once the EA is issued. And so it would almost be more important that we respond at that point is where I'm coming from. Because I think you've done a good job of outlining some of the concerns. The other thing I might do in a letter like this is to acknowledge, even though it's coming from the town, the response, maybe to acknowledge upfront that you're responding at this point for the letters that were sent to both the town and to the Select Board. Can you do that?
If, I mean, if, if that's the pleasure of the board, I'm happy to do that. I didn't want to presume since they're.
No, yeah, I appreciate that. For me, the, the more important thing is responding to the EA, particularly since some good points have been, I just want to acknowledge that we received.
Okay.
Okay. And what?
When will that occur? When will that, when will the EA occur? Do we know?
It says here, spring 2024. So that's pretty soon. If not now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I, I'd be guided by Linda's advice here too, and I think that's sensible. I mean, just to say it out loud for those people that don't dig down to page 101 of 105, this, this is about a, a new passenger terminal, which is approximately 5,150 square feet, a single story building and a new fire station, which is 26,000 square feet and at the site of a former gas station, according to the important points in this letter. So these are both pretty small projects and all for fire stations, especially when they replace gas stations. And it sounds like they need a small area for offloading passengers that are dealing with the air force space.
And that doesn't really affect us?
No.
Okay, so.
Okay, great.
We say thank you very much for letting us know.
Yeah, and I, I think Megan's letter is very appropriate. So let's do, let's go with that.
Okay, great.
Great.
Do you want, do you want me to edit it to include that it's also from the board? Or would you just like me to send it as this?
Yeah. I would. Yeah, sure. I can do that.
As Linda suggested.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and no action is required. Okay, so then we move on to item.
Sorry, did you guys want to vote to approve that other letter?
No, no, it's just coming from the staff.
Yeah, the, the.
The original.
Terry's.
Oh, yes, thank you. Move to approve the letter for public comment on the Hanscom North Airfield Environment's report as included in the Select Board meeting packet with, with amendments discussed at the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Shannon.
Okay, so when we're taking care of item 11, and then we go on to item 12 on the agenda, which is consider support of anticipated finance committee amendment to annual town meeting warrant, Article 20, to support affirmative action in accordance with the guidelines of the, the guidelines of the finance committee. we have in our package a, a letter from the, well, we had a memorandum from the superintendent of the, of the regional school district. And we have a letter from the finance committee expressing the, the opinion of the finance committee that they would recommend affirmative action on the regional school district budget in the amount of the finance committee guidelines. And then I corresponded with the regional school district saying that we would appreciate that, we would appreciate their complying with the guidelines that everybody else had complied with. And that I was going to ask the board to recommend affirmative action with regard to the motion, which we expected from the finance committee, namely to amend the budget, to, to amend the budget to the amount specified in the finance committee guidelines. So I'll throw that out for discussion.
This has not been discussed by, the, the, the school committee hasn't discussed this budget in light of the letters between, from. budget in light of the letters between, from Dr. Hunter and from the Chair of the Finance Committee. Is that correct?
And I have received no response to my email of April 12th.
Okay, so this is still an active issue?
Yes.
My understanding is the school committee is going to discuss their, hopefully, final budget recommendations, and whatever they're going to move at their meeting tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know whether the Finance Committee is going to respond or react to that, but it seems like this is not really settled. We don't know what they're going to land on, and how they're gonna, and I would like to think that the Finance Committee will take into consideration whatever discussion and decision the school committee comes up with before preempting that with, with an amendment to a motion that they don't have in front of them yet.
Well, but they'll know by Thursday night.
Right, and when, once, once all, once all of that is in front of us, then I'd be more than happy to engage in this discussion.
So, you're saying, I think what you're doing is suggesting until we find out what happens at the school committee meeting, then what happens at the Finance Committee meeting, which means a meeting right before town meeting.
Right, see, that, that would be my preference.
I agree with that.
That makes sense.
And I suppose that gives us more opportunity for the, for the budget to get adjusted, because that was the purpose.
Yes.
Yeah.
The purpose was to encourage the school committee to bring their budget into line with the FinCom recommendations. If the FinCom changes their recommendations, so be it, but I think it's important that, at least from my point of view, is that we, that wherever we can, we should support the guidelines put forth by the Finance Committee, because that is the only, I think, more or less objective financial analysis that takes place with regard to the demands or needs of virtually all of the town departments.
I'm not sure I'd go quite that far.
Well, you don't have to.
I, I would, I think that the, the, the departments that are charged with operating our various activities, including the schools, are obviously closest to the ground, and should be in dialogue with the Finance Committee about what their, what their needs are and what their drivers are, and they should, and the Finance Committee should be taking in as much new information as they can as they go along. I think it's absolutely their purview to set a guideline. I know when I was sitting in the Finance Committee, I always recognized that what was true in, at the end of November, when setting the guideline, may have changed in some regard, or certainly might have become a little bit more clear by the time we're on the eve of town meeting, which is exactly where we are, and so I would hope that both sides are going to engage in a constructive dialogue that's going to reach some kind of consensus, so that we can avoid dueling numbers at town meeting.
That was exactly my point.
Yeah.
I will say, though, that I was on the FinCom years ago as well, and I do feel that that, at that time, the process was more iterative, in that the guideline was more of, it had more art to it than science, and it was kind of, and because of that, it was more negotiable, if you will, whereas I think this particular Finance Committee in the last few years has developed a guideline based on data, and based on an objective look at what, looking externally and looking at data published by the, I think it was the Commerce Department, as far as what are, what is the expected increase in salaries, and what is the expected increase in income? So, there's a, there's a real objective way of looking at what would be a reasonable increase to budgets, if we take into consideration what we think salary costs will increase, and what we think people's income will increase to actually afford that. So, the, the process has changed, and there is a lot more, I think, objectivity and more data, or more real data behind the guideline than there was, at least in my time. I just want to point that out.
So, I'm, I'm, I would have liked to have had some, some response to the, the, the email that I sent to the Regional School District on our intention, that I, or my intention, I should say, to ask the Select Board to support the guideline, which you described as being more or less objective, because I don't think there's anything that is done in this town that somebody would not want to spend more money on.
Well, I think, Henry...
And, and spending more money does not necessarily produce a better result, and so there is, there, there, there needs to be, I think, somebody who is somewhat removed from the mission of the particular department or agency, who is able to exercise some restraint.
Right.
So, and I think that is what the Finance Committee does, it does for, does for most of the other town activities, and I think it's important that we are on board with that process. Otherwise, there really is, you know, the, the decisions on spending money become more interested with regard to the mission of the particular agency, and our, there are always, there are always needs.
So, so, Henry, you started by saying you were looking for a response to your April 12th. I'm thinking, I don't know, but I'm thinking that the school committee is meeting tomorrow, and that after that, they will, I'm thinking, send a response. So, I, I don't know if they've met since April 12th, when you sent this letter, because last week was school vacation week, et cetera, so I, I do agree with Mark and Linda that, you know, let's wait and see, after their meeting tomorrow, maybe they will have a response.
Carrie, what I, I think that...
Carrie has something she wants to say.
The Chair of the CCRSD actually did respond last Friday, the 18th, I mean, excuse me, the 19th, at least a preliminary response.
But that wasn't the voice of the school committee? That was the voice of...
I just wanted, I thought it was important to, to mention that. They didn't, they didn't go without response.
Did, do we get that?
I don't think I received it.
I don't think we got that.
I, I can send that to the...
So, but, what I, but I would, as we go into the, or as the school committee goes into their meeting on this issue, I would like them to know that this board is very serious about, very serious about there being a real effort to comply with the, with the guidelines, and I hope that that would influence their deliberations on where they come out.
I support that.
I, I agree, and I also want to say that I learned today that the League of Women Voters is also supporting the Finance Committee guideline, and not the school committee number in their recommendation that they do.
Well, that's helpful. So, so we're going to just carry this forward to our meeting. I've asked, I've asked Shannon to post meetings for six o'clock on every, every day on which the town meeting is in session, and we can convene, so that would be on the 29th at six o'clock. Is that our next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And then this will be on our agenda for that meeting.
Great.
Okay.
Shannon, will you be posting in a separate room?
Yeah, it should be in one of the learning comment rooms.
Yeah, okay.
And so, I don't think this requires any discussion at this point, and...
Is there public comment?
Well, if you, this is not public comment. We, this is a matter that's before the board, and if you'd like to certainly say a few words, as they say, you're here, and you might as well have come for some purpose.
Yes.
Thank you, Tracy Morano, 39 Partridge Lane, Chair of the Regional School Committee, but speaking on behalf of myself. We have not met as a school committee since you, you sent the email to us, but I did respond last Friday. So, I want to talk to you tonight about Article 20. Tonight, I ask you to support the recommended budget that was voted on and supported by the school committee. The Finance Committee intends to amend this article at town meeting to the recommended guideline of 3.26 percent. It should be noted that the regional increase of 3.08 percent is one of the lowest in the state. I commend Dr. Hunter and Mr. Conry for bringing forth responsible budget in a volatile budget climate, as evidenced in the comparison in the memo to our peer districts and budget increases statewide. We have made cuts to our budget already, including a reduction of seven FTEs. It should be noted that we have an enrollment shift to Concord that accounts for $55,000, which is not taken into consideration during the Finance Committee guideline process. In order for us to reduce our budget to the Finance Committee guideline, it'll be necessary to reduce it by another $159,000. The only way to do this is to look at our FTEs. This will have a significant impact to our students and impacts our programming. We've already made choices, and I can assure you that we do not take this lightly. We've made many reductions already, and if this article does not pass, the two programs that we will be obligated to cut will be one FTE, computer science teacher, and a reduction of .25 FTEs for select chorus. This has a significant impact on students and teachers. Without computer science, our students will lose the ability to complete the engineering certificate. The engineering certificate helps our students differentiate themselves when applying to college, and can help guide their career choices. Our duty as a school committee is to advocate for the needs of students. Student achievement is at the forefront of everything that we do, and I look forward to advocating for our students in these two programs at town meeting. While I understand and respect the role of the Finance Committee and the Select Board, we also have a role to advocate for our programs. I urge you to vote yes on Article 20, as presented in the warrant, to support our students and our educators, and do what's best for our school district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Can I ask a question, Tracy? Can I ask you a question? You said that you reduced seven FTEs. Is that from your FY '24 budget?
That's for FY '25.
No, but I, the seven, the incremental change, so you had seven in the FY '24 that you're...
That we've reduced, yes.
You're gonna let go seven people?
Yes.
Okay.
Court Booth, member of the school committee, 144 Wright Road, speaking for myself. I want to assure this committee that the two cuts that were just referred to were superintendent recommendations. They are not school committee cuts. We have not discussed them. So, as you said earlier tonight, we'd be wise to look at it tomorrow, and I trust we will.
Thank you, Court. The Chair of the Finance Committee is here this evening. Prashar, do you want to say anything?
I have another question for Tracy.
Okay.
Tracy, can I ask, I'm sorry, can I ask you one more question? Revenue for the, for the high school, right? What, what's happening as far as sources of revenue for the high school from FY '24 to FY '25?
Additional sources of revenue?
Right.
Like specifically, are you talking about facilities fees, or any, any revenue sources?
What's the change in revenue?
The state revenues are going down.
No, I mean, like, other revenues.
So, the only things that we collect, we collect athletic fees.
Right.
We collect a parking fee.
Yep.
We collect facilities fees.
Right.
And then we have state funding.
Right.
We also have grant funding.
Okay. And what's, so, if you take that whole, is it going out?
I don't have everything in front of me right now. I can grab my computer if you want.
Okay. No, just, if you'd get that to me before we vote at town meeting...
I think you should have all of that in our budget book. It should all be in the budget book, from the FY '25 budget book. You have it, yeah.
Do we?
You should have it.
I was wondering if I could just get an answer to that question, so that I don't have to struggle through the whole budget book.
I'll go through it, and I'll get your answer.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Sure, sure, no problem.
Prashar, you want to say anything at this point?
Nothing that hasn't been, hasn't been said before, but thank you, Prashar Patel.
Well, that's true of most things.
I understand that. Prashar Patel, 397 Sudbury Road. I guess, speaking as Chair of the Finance Committee, but obviously not going to say anything on which we haven't opined, the article is not on our agenda for Thursday, because we were informed, or at least the communication made it very clear, that no further changes were pending. So, it's not on our agenda. Obviously, if there are changes, we would consider them, but at this point, things are the way they are. And again, you know, for the record, we consider a lot of factors. Hopefully, everybody's read our Finance Committee report, right? We're looking at revenue coming in, we're looking from the ground up of the needs of the town and the schools. We have conversations, we've continued to have conversations through the whole budget cycle, so it's not like we set a guideline arbitrarily without input. We actually had input in October before we set the guideline, so we did consider what the proposed budgets were looking like. And as Mary mentioned, we have objective data from the Congressional Budget Office, in which we try to look at both income and inflation costs for the next five years, including next year. And based on that, and multiple considerations, including, oh, by the way, potential tax increases and the impact on residents. And if you take a look at our Finance Committee report, we are facing a 7.9 percent increase in the median property tax bill every year for the next five years. So, again, this is ultimately a choice up to the voters. We can agree to disagree, and it's okay. I don't think anybody's going to get confused, Mark, about numbers, you know? There's one set of numbers, and we might recommend another set. So, frankly, you know, it's okay if good folks don't come to consensus all the time, and let the voters decide. So, that, that's all I'll say.
Can I ask, so, Prashar, you said it's not on your agenda for Thursday night?
No.
Can you, don't you have time to change that tomorrow morning, so that you, if, if...
We might, but let's see what happens Wednesday.
Well, if you change your agenda, you'll have the option of discussing it or not.
We could, but again, you know, at the end of the...
I'd hate to see some movement with no reaction.
So, at the end of the day, Mary, again, it was a 10 to 1 vote. We'll see what happens. We can also change it right up until 8:00 AM.
Okay.
So, and, you know, again, it goes back to, it's okay to disagree occasionally, right?
I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and there's that, we call that dynamic tension.
Dynamic tension?
All right, so, then, we're taking no action on that particular item.
Right.
And then we move on to the discussion of warrant articles.
That's right.
Right, and we've, we've...
No, we have a few.
We've done a lot of, we've already covered a lot of that, haven't we?
Yes, we only have a few left.
We have a few left that we haven't dealt with, and we have a few that perhaps some people would like to change their minds on.
Too late.
Too late to change your mind?
Well, no, it's not too late.
It's never too late to change your mind.
Do you want to change your mind?
No, I, I'm happy with the one I have.
Okay.
So, the first one we had was Article 7, and we've already done that tonight.
That's right.
And then the next one I think we had was Article 20, which we're going to wait. So, I think the next one is Article 24, Concord Public Schools Capital Budget. I don't think we've taken a position on that one yet.
It's the FinCom?
FinCom, Article 24.
Is there a question, or do you have an answer?
We have the answer. Do you have the answer?
I have the answer.
Great, go ahead.
I think there was a rhetorical question.
Go ahead.
We voted in support of the article.
Great, thank you.
Article 24, capital budget for schools. I'm just wanting to make...
The only one where we have a disagreement is Article 20.
Okay.
With respect to the schools.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, move to recommend affirmative action on Article 24.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Well, can I just ask, what, why did we wait? What was the question on it? Is it resolved?
I think it was the Thoreau.
Were we just waiting for the Finance Committee, or...
Yes.
Yes.
And they had a question about Thoreau.
Okay, fine, sorry.
That's okay.
All right. So, I don't know if we voted, because I was interrupting, so, I'm, I'm ready to vote now.
Okay.
We did vote.
We just did vote.
Okay.
You still ready?
If you have a discussion before you vote, all right, fine, so, we voted.
Now, we're moving on to...
Okay, the next one is 33 Solar, and we're not going to be moving that article, right?
But we do have to take a position on Article 1.
Yes.
Special Town Meeting. So should we do that now? Because I don't see that on the schedule.
It's because they're at the end.
Is it? There it is, there's, never mind.
At the very end, it says, another heading.
Got it.
2024 Special Town Meeting.
I stand corrected, good.
Speaker's time chart.
Okay, so the next two are the cell tower.
Okay, cell tower. So I have some notes here. Here we go. Okay, so the Public Works Board took these up within the last week, I think April 10th. They are in favor of Article 39. They don't seem to have any problem with it, but for 30.
No, they did have a problem with it. They say they don't have any room for it.
No, that's 38. Sorry. 38 is the one that they're having a problem with because.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. This looks backwards. Okay. This document is backwards from, okay, right. Start over, sorry about that, okay?
That's okay, go ahead.
The landfill, 38.
Yep.
They don't have any problem with that one.
Okay.
Oh, is this?
At the landfill.
Okay, they have no problem with it.
But 39, the Kaiser Road campus is really crowded. There's a lot of heavy equipment that has to move in and out during the winter storms and even in the summer with the paving trucks and the street sweepers. And so for the safety of the crews, they need to keep a little bit of room unobstructed so the trucks can turn around safely. So they, the Public Works Board is opposing Article 39 on Kaiser Road.
On Article 38, did they talk with CMLP about locating the ground-mounted solar panels at that site as well? Did they coordinate with them at all? Do you know, Carrie?
So I think the PWC actually asked for six months, no later than six months from the passage of the resolution because they wanted time to be able to do some additional review, planning, coordination. I do believe Jason Bulger was in attendance at that PWC meeting.
So there isn't a problem, or we don't know?
They would like some additional time. They're willing, PWC, it's my understanding, is willing to support the article if additional time is provided to give them to make an assessment, to give to them to make an assessment.
But they won't have it in time for town meeting. They won't have that information.
But the article is to issue an RFP, so I'm assuming what you mean is as long as the RFP doesn't go out for.
But we don't need any action by either the town meeting or by the Select Board for the town staff to issue an RFP, right?
I think also they want, where it says three months for the RFP, I think they've gotten the petitioner to agree to amend it to six months to issue the RFP.
But I mean, I think there's actually no real technical expertise involved in making these decisions.
So it sounds to me like we need to make this decision at town meeting once we've heard the deliberation.
I think that would make sense because I'm not sure that we know for sure whether or not the petitioner has agreed to the six months.
Oh, to issue the RFP?
Yes.
Okay, I'm following now. Okay, besides that, I thought I heard the last time we talked about this is that by issuing an RFP, that somehow weakens our negotiating position for other sites.
It does.
It does.
It does.
And you're saying it doesn't?
No.
We did hear that, though.
Well, we've heard that, but.
You don't believe it?
Nope.
Well.
I'm willing to abstain from this because I really, I don't understand. There's information in the background around negotiating that I'm not privy to, so I don't know the impact on those negotiations, so I don't, I don't feel like I can make an intelligent.
You know, you're right, but I think the Select Board has to.
No, they don't.
Well, they can, I'm just saying I'm going to abstain. I don't.
So I think you need to keep in mind that the article is requesting the town to urge the Select Board to ask the town manager to issue a request for proposals.
It's one of those urging.
Urges to ask Terry.
Yeah, so, yeah, well, so, so in other words, it doesn't have a lot of teeth in it. It's just the expression of a preference.
I wouldn't expect that we would be issuing a request for proposals until we had a full understanding of the impact of additional solar at this site.
Thank you.
All right.
I didn't know it was an urge to ask.
So that doesn't mean, that that would mean that we are more favorably.
I am now, I am now, yes, yes, yes.
That we're only going to be urged instead of required?
Yes.
Which means that it becomes, it's essentially meaningless and therefore we're in favor of it?
No, it's because, no, no, it was because, as I said earlier, because I wasn't privy to how this may impact negotiations, I didn't feel like I could make a good decisions. And now I'm hearing that there will be people making the decision that do have that information. So that removes from, for me, my hesitancy.
I'm not sure that it, I'm not sure that it would be viewed as odd for the Select Board not to make a recommendation on this petition article that is urging you to do something.
That's true.
Yeah.
That's true.
I think we should be urged, no.
You know, we could urge ourselves. If you want to be urged, we can do it. We don't need somebody to urge us.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to ask the town manager, where it says no later than three months, there's supposed to be an RFP, is that realistic? Or do you think that it needs to be a six months?
It's a three-month urge.
So when this was brought.
No, it's not. It says that the RFP be issued as soon as possible, no later than three months from the passage of this resolution. So I think the PWC thought that was unrealistic.
Yes.
You agree?
But is it still an urge?
Yes.
Do we have the motion, actually?
Hmm, I don't.
I mean, whether ultimately we get urged or we get, they attempt to require us.
We're still planning the petitioner agreeing to the extension of the RFP.
So when we had the motion review meeting with the moderator, I think that was last week, she was going to reach out to the petitioner to finalize the motion. So we don't have a final motion yet, but we do understand that the timetable, no later than six, three months, will be amended to no later than six months.
Right.
Right, okay.
Why don't we just kick it down the road?
Let's put this off until we find the motion, until we see the motion.
Okay, and it's the same thing. And the other, the Public Works, we have a negative view of that because of the Public Works.
Correct.
Okay, so that's, so that's no action, 39?
They are going to recommend no action.
What do we think?
I think that we should, I'm also favorably inclined towards the landfill, and I recognize that there may be some concerns at the Kaiser Road site that make this not particularly timely until, you know, more, more is known about what's going on at that site. So I would defer to the Public Works Commission.
And one other issue with the Public Works site is that when we have a little bit of breathing room in our capital, our capital abilities, the Public Works site might be moving someplace else.
Right.
Right.
And having a cell tower there might really significantly limit our options as to what could be done with that site.
Correct. The Public Works Commission also talked about that, and that's another reason they don't want to move favorably on this article.
Yeah, I think that the, we, as the town of Concord, if we want cell service to improve in the community, need to find ways to directly support projects that are going to come to fruition because we have established ourselves as being difficult to complete a project in. And so we need to try to avoid that by being clear about where we want these things and supporting the ones that we can support. So I, I think one of the ways to be clear about that is to, is to avoid the Kaiser Road site for the moment.
We are still moving, although there is a new obstacle, we are still moving forward with the one site that is the most promising at this point.
Yeah. I continue to note that there are, in the United States market, three dominant carriers who split the market, and any given single provider, at best, only improved service for those people that happen to subscribe to that single provider's service. So until we've got at least three things going, we probably aren't really solving the problem globally. And we have another town center at West Concord, which is simply off the table at the moment, which also has terrible service. So we're going to have to become a lot more inclusive about what we're looking at here in order to be successful.
And neither of these proposed sites will provide better service for West Concord.
At best, moving forward at the landfill site would establish that a project got built within, how long has it been since a new tower of any kind has gone active in this town? 15 years?
Well, the one at Middlesex, the Middlesex School went through moving it, and that took like three years to move it from one.
From one building to another, yeah. And that's, and that arguably is not new service, just somewhat improved. So we just need to establish that we can do these projects.
Okay. And we're, I think, and we're close on one.
Right.
And on that one, the town is not the problem.
So are we suggesting no action on Article 39?
Yes, I would vote for no action on that.
I would vote for no action.
Yeah, I would, so.
Okay, move to recommend no action on Article 39.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're, and we're with only judgment on 38?
We want to see the motion.
Right, so we only have two left that we haven't decided, 38 and 20. And now we just have to do the special town meeting article.
Oh, boy.
Good.
Okay. You had a very good hearing on that, don't you think?
Yeah, we did, I thought so.
Yeah. I think that the special town meeting article is a very important article for grid reliability. I think it's, it's somewhat challenging topic for people to engage with. I would like to propose that we talk about it a little bit like we might talk about a water reservoir. A large-scale, a utility-scale battery provides a repository for energy that can be used in times of shortage and, and it can also absorb energy in times of excess energy. And the risk of excess energy on our grid is increased substantially with the closure of MCI Concord. And I think that it's commendable that town staff has found a way to respond to that on a timely basis. It still leaves open a fairly significant period of time from whenever the closure really takes place, let's say the middle of this year, through the fall of 2025 before, you know, at the early end, a project could be done. And that's a, reliability is what CMLP is known for, and I think we should be supportive of that.
The other thing to remember is that this is an investment, and it's not an expense, so it will not impact our property taxes at all. It has a negligible impact on our rates.
It will raise the cost of electricity.
By $1 per month.
For one year.
For one year.
One year, and then it goes.
Or it lowers it.
And then it lowers it, right. So it's, and it goes cash positive in the first year. And the reason is simple, it's just that if we've got energy stored in a battery, when we have our peak demand on a, you know, on a hot summer day when everybody turns their ACs on, instead of us having to buy expensive energy that charges us capacity and transmission costs, we can be using what's stored in the battery. So we're going to be actually saving money with this investment, so that's. And the other thing is, is that I've heard recently that we've got, we've had some businesses in West Concord that wanted to install solar.
Right.
And they couldn't because we didn't have the capacity on the grid. And so they have abandoned some of those ideas, which I think is a shame.
Yeah.
Given our climate action goals, that we've got companies willing to invest in solar, and we don't have the capacity. So I think this is something we should have done.
But, but this does not, this does not increase the capacity of the grid.
No, what this does is this protects us, the primary rationale for doing this is to protect us from the possibility of really, a real risk of a system, a nearly system-wide failure of the electric grid. And the interesting thing about this is that these, a day like today, a warm.
Sunny.
Sunny, spring day or fall day is the day where, that we're at risk.
Yes.
And so far in 20, in 2024, there have been 29 hours in which the system load dropped below 10 megawatts, which is extremely low when you think about the amount of energy that's powering the entire town from the grid. And it's because we've been successful at acquiring solar power. And what's interesting about that is that more than half of those times have occurred on weekends. So this is a risk to the reliability of the grid that occurs at times when we're not used to thinking about there, there might be an electric problem. We're used to thinking about it when there's a hurricane, or when there's a winter storm, or when there's a three-day-long heat wave. We're not thinking about it as there's a risk to the grid during a beautiful spring day, but we need to, and this is a response to that.
So I agree with everything that's been said, but I just want to put out there that there are some citizens who are challenging some of the data that we saw in the presentation. They'll probably speak up at, at the town meeting. I don't have the technical background, and I don't think most citizens do, to know, you know, how to judge all of these technical assumptions that are in there. But one of them, for example, is the size of the battery. And I guess there's a small, a medium, and a large. This is the recommendation for the large battery. There's some thought that maybe we go with the medium battery. I have no idea, and I don't know how the average citizen is going to know. But these, also, they're challenging the assumptions about what we were just saying, that the first year we lose $1 a month, and then the other years we make money. That though, you know, that those, they're saying those assumptions are incorrect. I don't think we have a way of knowing, I really don't.
Here's what I think. We have, in many areas in this town, very capable professional staff who are.
Right.
Who, in areas in which both we and the voters have very little expertise. And if we can't, I mean, I'm sure there are plenty of exceptions, but if we can't rely on the expertise of the staff that we hire to be in charge of these things, that's the problem, and not whether or not we should take these actions.
You're right, that's true.
And I happen to think that the, that the people involved in this particular project are, are highly competent.
Yeah. Could I just add something? So because of our governance structure, we have essentially one opportunity a year for the town to come together and authorize, approve debt, issuance of debt for a project. A project of this size, if it's the large battery for sure, probably the medium battery, it needs to be debt-financed. The recommendation. The recommendation is for the larger battery, but it doesn't preclude a medium-sized battery if, as we get into this further, we decide that a medium-sized battery is a better project at this point in time. But if we approved a medium-sized battery, and we decided three or four months from now that we really needed a larger one, we don't have the borrowing authorization to move the project forward.
And we're talking about essentially three modules that would constitute this large battery. As I remember the, the discussion at the hearing, is it was going to be three container, essentially, container units. And so that, there must be, you know, you must be able to make a choice as to whether you actually take, buy one, two, or three.
Yeah. I, if, if you could, I just wanted to make one other comment. Sorry, I'm just, I'm just referring to an email that was sent to me earlier. And so I think the, the other thing that is important from the electrical engineering staff, the, the large battery is what they are recommending to address the grid issue. Their primary thought in making that recommendation is not the, the financial aspects or making the money. It's, it's grid resilience, grid stability, and that, that is the recommendation. But again, this, we will continue to look at this. It will be before the light board. And it, it may be that as we get further into this, a different decision is made. But again, if we don't have the full borrowing authorization to work with, that could impact the outcome in a negative way for the, for the grid.
Okay, let's do it.
So that's a really good point. I think you will get that question, and that's a really good response. So I just want to bring that up, that those discussions are out there. But I'm in favor of this article.
A move would recommend affirmative action on Article 1 in a special town meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That was easy.
It was.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, where are we?
Okay.
Okay, move, take up the business.
We have anything else to do?
We have one more thing.
And you're, time of no new business.
Oh, okay, is that, okay. Is there any reason not to adopt that? Because it certainly can be changed by the meeting in any event if, if necessary.
Who we change it?
The meeting itself.
Ah, okay.
So is this a recommendation? Or how does, I forget how this works.
It's a motion that the, it's, it's a typical, or it's a standard motion that the board makes that the, when they're setting up the procedure, that they would, meeting take up no new business after whatever o'clock it is. 10 o'clock in this case. But at any point along the way, somebody can make a motion to change that.
That's right.
And the meeting could vote on it, so it's not a-
Is it a majority vote, Henry?
It's a majority vote, as I-
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Right, and I think that traditionally, the, the motion has been made by the Select Board on every evening that wasn't anticipated to be the last evening.
Right, because you will, we'll go on all night if necessary to finish on the third night.
To finish on the last, and there have been times when that has been inadvisable, but others when it, when it was very helpful.
So do we need a motion tonight, or do we make it at each meeting?
Well, I guess we might want to vote to make that motion.
I think we should authorize the-
Or maybe we should urge ourselves to make that motion.
And then ask the town manager.
So I think it's, the decision is that we're going to make the motion each evening.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
But-
Okay, move the-
Wait a minute.
Oh.
We're going to make the motion each evening for what time?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock.
Okay. Got it. So do we have-
That the Select Board make a motion at the beginning of each night of town meeting to take up no new business after 10:00 p.m.?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, wait, do you have, you want to open it up to any public comment?
No, I think, I think it's already 8:15. It's past my bedtime. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.
All right, so are we adjourned?
We are.
Okay.
Adjourned.
Zoom has ended, so we must be.